Meeting to order. Do you want to read out counsel of our closed session, please?
We are reconvening into open session from closed session and there is no reportable action at this time.
Thank you. Dean, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing.
Let's pray together, please. Lord, you are the maker and creator of all things, and it is by your hand that you give power and leadership to men and women, Lord. And so we pray now that this meeting tonight would be done to your honor and to your glory. We pray, Father, for wisdom for our councilmen and women that lead us, Lord. We pray that they would do so in such a way that honors you above men and honors you above anything else. We pray, Father, that you would bless this meeting to that end. We pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, this is time for public discussion if there's anybody...
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess we got to do roll call and figure out who is there first. Roll call.
Councilmember Dean Ucker.
Here.
Daniel Droggrath.
Here.
Jake Parks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Leo Zuber.
Here.
Mayor Mike Rastusia.
Present. Okay, now, public discussion. This is time, if there's anything that you want to bring up that is not on the agenda, if it's on the agenda, we will address it at that time. So if there's anybody in the audience who wants to say anything, please come up to the mic, state your name and address, and we will listen.
My name is John Bionis. I live in Ripon. My concern is some of the stuff that's going on down at the river. I've organized some river cleanups, picked up lots of garbage. I passed along some pictures to you guys that you guys can look at. It's an ongoing, every-week issue down there. We're starting to see some... There's some homeless people living down there, lots of beer drinking, lots of fires. Last weekend, I counted seven barbecues going down there. So I met with Daniel and a few other people a couple of weeks ago, and I just want to bring this up to you guys. I don't know if we can come up with something somehow and, you know, get organized to take care of some of this stuff. Create a... Dennis Bitters created... Suggested a task force to maybe come up with some ideas how to take care of things down there. It's a lot of work for the police department. It's a lot of work for the fire department. And when I hear bickering about it, I'm just here to say, look, this is an issue. Here's some real pictures that I've taken, and I'm concerned and want to do something about it. Longevity, long-term-wise, you know, one plastic bottle takes 1,000 years to decompose in the river, and I couldn't tell you how many plastic bottles I've picked up out there. So it's a real problem. So I don't know if there's anything we can do. I'm just bringing it up.
We can't address it right now, but let us talk about that and get together with the chief and city managers, see if there's something we can do, because we should.
Okay.
I appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Okay.
Thank you.
So why should we just get together with the chief? And I've already met with City Administrator Daniel and Ted.
So what's come out of that?
Do you want to say anything to that term of what we discussed?
Yeah, so when we met, we came up with a number of items. I think Mr. Bionis had a number of good suggestions of what to do with the river. We've talked about adding some clear signage as you walk down of, you know, no illegal dumping, no leaving trash behind, no barbecues, no fires. So staff is working on putting those in place. I know the police department, they operate weekly patrol... Weekend patrols down there, and they've done that. I know last weekend, last couple of weekends, they've had a lot of citations for open containers and people drinking in public. Public Works, they go down there twice a week right now. They go on Mondays and Thursdays, and they do a full cleanup. So those are kind of some of the discussions that we had as part of our meeting with Mr. Bionis.
All right, thank you. Do you want to add anything else, Chief?
I can add a small snippet to that conversation. As of last year, we didn't do weekend patrols down at the river because the river was inaccessible due to higher water levels. So at the beginning of this year, we kind of operated in the same manner. We weren't doing weekend patrols down there because of the river levels and because of the debris in the river, there wasn't a lot of access. Once the weather started warming up and the water level started to decrease, we started to see influx of people, and we reorganized and started our weekend patrols where we have assigned officers on overtime shifts going down there for usually between 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. on Saturdays and Sundays. We usually do that between Memorial and Labor Days. Like I said, this year, we didn't start until about three weeks ago, maybe four weeks ago. So we're going to be increasing that and continuing that through Labor Day, and at that point in time, we'll monitor to see if the influx of people decreases since schools started today, and if necessary, we'll continue to increase that through the end of September.
Okay. Thank you.
But we are seeing a lot of issues that Mr. Bionis has mentioned. I think this weekend, we issued about eight citations and made about four arrests down there for warrants and so forth, so.
Okay. Thanks, Chief.
Okay, so it sounds like we're trying to help out. Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 10, 2018?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Hold on, we have a motion. We have a second. You have to hit it again, Leo.
Yeah.
You have to hit it again.
I can't. He already did it.
Yeah, yeah. What did Lisa tell you?
Okay, so that's a 5-0 vote.
That's the only thing I had.
Okay. Okay. Technology sometimes gets goofed up here, so we got to work with that. Sorry about that. It's not us. It's the computers. Okay, approval of the consent... Approval of the agenda as posted or amended?
Yeah, 1.4E.
1.4E, okay.
I have a list, too.
Okay.
1.2E.
Okay.
1.3A, B, C, and D.
Okay.
And 1.4B, D, and E's already been pulled.
Okay. Jake?
And then I've got 1.1E, 1.1F, and then I think we have just said 1.4B.
Why don't we just pull them all?
Why do we have to come under?
Okay, well, can we approve the one item left? I have a motion to approve. Second?
Wait a minute. You better hurry up or Nina will sneak in there.
Okay.
Oh, second.
Second.
Okay. Approval of the consent counter as amended?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
You're being shut out tonight.
Right, Dean. Dean, hit it. Okay, thank you.
He's not the mover. He doesn't know what to do.
Okay, 1.1E. First of all, do you have all those?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, if possible, we can take 1.1E and 1.1F together. I just wanted to call out that these are... That what happens with the commercial garbage pickups is they pay a monthly or quarterly franchise fee, and then it's up to them to go out and solicit business for commercial complexes and things like that in order to make their profit that this isn't for the city. So if it looks kind of weird, like we have three different garbage pickups, actually, because you can include waste management in there as well, that's why. So they... These companies pay a monthly franchise fee or quarterly franchise fee to us. So that's it.
Okay, 1.2E, I think we're actually pulling, aren't we, off the agenda?
We want to remove that until a future council meeting. We need more information. And that... I've spoken with the school district, and they will be providing that, but we want to pull it and hold over till a future meeting.
They're aware of what information we want?
Yeah, I met with Andy last Friday, and I've talked with Frank, who's the chief financial guy over there now, and they know what we're looking for with the school going back... The kids going back today. They are pretty swamped. We were optimistic that it would... We'd get all the information by the meeting, but it didn't happen, so we want to pull that item.
Should we be voting on these as we go, or do we want to do them all?
No, I want to get them all at once.
Do them all at once?
Okay. 1.3A?
Did everybody get that update that you sent me for 1.3A and B?
Yes. No, for 1.3A, I sent out a new staff report because the resolution changed, because the transfer amount changed.
Page 66.
Right. My only concern even about the revised staff report is it's... There's still one place where the income and the expenses don't line up, and it's that there is a transfer from someplace into the street and road fund of about $575,000, which you count as income, but it just appears. And in the future, I'm one of those people that looks across the bottom to see if they add up, and there was a half a million dollar difference, and that's what got me going. So we just need to fix that.
I will do that.
Okay.
Okay, 1.3B?
And then, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but I did want to point out that the sum of the transfer from LTF moved from $850,000 to $866,218.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Saw that. 1.3B?
Well, and since the people in the audience don't have the sheet, this may be a little bit boring, but I'm... My concern... Even with the revision, my concern is that, in my mind, there are places where the reimbursements for these landscape districts don't line up with the policy. And in another couple of places, the math doesn't work. For instance, in Dutch Meadows, they started out with a $2,300 deficit, spent $5,000 more than they took in, so they ended up with a $7,000 deficit, but we only put back in What happened to the $2,300 deficit that they started with?
That's included in the $7,000 deficit.
Balance prior to a transfer.
So, okay...
So you had a deficit of $2,000, you spent $5,000, you ended with a deficit of $7,000. We're transferring $7,000.
All right, okay. And then for Country Woods, they spent way more than they had. They started with $10,000. They ended up spending... Jeez.
Twenty-eight.
Not $10,000 more than they had, but we're putting $20,000 back in. Why are we going back to the... To giving them a balance when they already spent it, and all we're trying to do is keep these things at zero at worst?
When we do our analysis, we look either at the deficit balance that it is, such in the first instance of Dutch Meadows had a $7,000 deficit balance, but in this case, we looked at the deficit for the year. And so we're leaving a balance in there in case next year there's a minor deficit. We can push that balance down a little bit, but because this one would have driven it down so far, we transferred the entire deficit for the year, not the deficit balance.
I can understand that. I guess my concern is we're putting $10,000 into a hole, and we could use that $10,000 someplace else, because if they repeat their... What they did this year, we're going to be right back here again. And in my mind, when we've talked about these landscape districts, it's that each year, we will at least bring them back to zero, but in this case, we're giving them extra money, and I would rather see that money someplace else, or the ability to use it someplace else. That's all. And there was one other one.
You know, if I could just bring up one point. I think that's a good policy, though, discussion.
No, I...
I think this is a direct argument from staff, because in that one, you know, they started the year off with a $10,000 balance. Year to year, it was the twenty-some thousand dollar deficit, so... But, you know, if council... If they're not able to support themselves, you know, if the policy direction is to let them all drive to zero, and that the general fund does support them on a year-to-year basis, we could do that, too, because we'll change the policy of how we do those, so.
Well, there's a couple of them. That's exactly what we did. You know, there's a couple of them that that's what we did. We left them at zero, and there's others. We did nothing, even though they did negative spend just because they had money. But if they keep that up, at some point, they're going to have nothing left.
And we started this two years ago, I believe. Before that, they all kind of... So some of them, you can see, had years of getting driven down, and they were very negative. We... A couple of years ago, we kind of rectified all that, and we left those at zero. The ones that did have money, when we started this a couple of years ago, we left that money with those districts.
Right.
So we could go either way. I think it's really just a policy direction we're looking for from the council.
Okay. And then your note about the lighting district? That deficit could go down if PG&E comes through with a recalculation of how much they're charging because of the LED lights that they put in town? Okay.
That's correct.
That's it.
Okay, 1.3C?
I just have a question. If we're talking about that pile of dirt on the east side of that house, there's more stuff than there is dirt there. Is it all going to the school district?
No, the pile of dirt, they're actually at the Missin Sports Park, out back kind of where the carnival was set up.
Yeah.
That pile is just a debris pile that you see east of the house.
Right. So we're talking about a different dirt pile?
Correct.
Good, because there was nothing there that I could see anybody would want in a hole. Okay.
1.3D?
Two questions. One, are these vehicles going to be whatever we call... I don't know what you call it. Set up to be police vehicles with the computers and the lights and all that stuff? Are they just... Are we just buying vehicles?
There's three vehicles that we're looking to solicit this grant for. One of the vehicles is actually to replace the aging Parks and Rec Director's vehicle, which is a '95 Jeep Cherokee. The other two are to replace a CSO vehicle and administrative vehicle for the department, so they will not have a fully outfit police vehicles. They'll have a radio, and they'll have minimal lights, just enough for the CSO, and the other car would be used for detectives and so forth.
Okay. So we're basically looking at the cost of the vehicle, less $20,000 for each car?
Correct. There will be a slight outfit charge of roughly about $4,600 to put the radios and the lights and the CSO and the detective admin car, but that's it.
And then the staff report refers to this as the General Capital/Department Fund. What is that? That's a new one on me.
On the monthly treasures report that I send, I think it usually says department funds under the capital items.
So it's general fund... We're going to pay for these with general fund money?
No, capital fund.
Which started out as general fund.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Just moving through the accounts.
Yeah, no, I just... I just want to know where stuff's coming from.
You're exactly right. It's money that we transferred from the general fund.
Okay, all right.
Those capital items.
Okay, 1.4B?
So several years ago, we moved and we started to do online processing of payments, and my question is both to Lisa and to Chief, as well as have we been able to extend that beyond just paying your water bill to some of the different processing things that I know that your staff has to do, like live scans and things like that? Have we been able to expand it to include some of that stuff yet?
Not at this time. I know City Clerk Rus has checked into it, and she may have some more information for it as an update.
Okay.
I have not looked into it since we began taking them for utility bills. I know at that time, we opted not to have a swipe at the front desk, but we do have a kiosk for that. We have expanded now. This agreement is actually for our recreation program, so it's something that we can look into.
Okay, yeah. If we could do that and we could online and automate as much of that as possible, that I think that would be a big benefit to everybody. So, thank you.
I have a question, too.
Sure.
In the staff report, it said it was to... This action was to reduce the processing fee?
Yes.
But in looking at that contract, I couldn't figure out what the fee is now or what it is going to be when we're done.
So the current portion of this fee that we're paying is 1.08, and they're going to present, and they're dropping it to 0.65%.
Per transaction?
To the dollars.
Yes, to the dollars.
To the dollars. That's what I mean.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
That's a big saving.
Yeah, it is. It's a big move.
Yeah. Lisa, you said that was a flat fee, 1.8%? Did I... Or did I mishear that?
1.08 is what it was going down to 0.65% of the dollar transaction.
Okay, across all credit cards?
Yes.
Yeah, that's where it gets processed.
I know some credit cards are charged.
I'm done with that one.
Okay, 1.4D?
This packet you gave us has a picture of the PCM 211302 custom variant that we just paid for. I couldn't figure out what that... I know we got a swing set. This is what else we got?
We haven't done anything.
Tell you approve it. And so, yeah, that's just a picture of what we will be replacing. Currently, there's play equipment and swings at Country Woods, extremely old, needs replacement, so we will replace the play equipment with this play equipment if you guys approve it, and the swing set with this swing set.
All right.
How old is that stuff out there right now? It's pretty old, isn't it?
What year we put that in? I can't remember.
Okay, so then it's old if we can't remember. Well, I'm concerned about safety. I'm concerned about safety on some of these that we've got, so I think this is a good idea.
Plywood on some of it.
Yeah, okay. And 1.4E?
I have that one, too.
You do?
Well, that's the...
Oh, no. Okay. So let's... So let's do something here first. Before we address 1.4E, let's approve these. So do we have a motion to approve the item?
The motion will be to approve everything except...
Except 1.4E.
No. And what was the one that...
And what they put up.
The school district one.
That's completely off.
1.2E. So everything else on the list, I'll move that we approve.
Okay, I'm going to do one more thing before we go to this. Sorry, Steve. We have a presentation or proclamation to the Ripon Arts League, and I know Joe is here. Joe, would you mind coming up, please, so I can... Oh.
Kid almost did.
Okay, good. Working? Okay. So this is a proclamation that we're very proud to provide you. Can you all hear me okay? So I don't want to read the whole proclamation, but this is the 25th year that Ripon Arts League has been around, so that's quite a... Quite a stent. It was founded in 1993, and I want to read just a couple of things. It started out consisting of 15 members. Got into the Arts League. Jackie Balatoria, Claudia Napoli, Jeanne Rudd, and Leo Zuber were some of the first members. They initially had 120 members from Ripon... For the Ripon Arts League, from Ripon Escalon, Salida, Manteca, Turlock, Lordi, and Bad Estero, so from all over. They currently have between 300 and 450 members, and I did used to attend, and I absolutely enjoyed it, and I haven't been for a while, and I need to start again since I've seen this. But a little bit of a plug, it's the Ripon High School, usually on Tuesday and Thursday evenings at 7:30. So it's quite a... Quite a feat for you all to have done this for 25 years and kept so many members, so we... The city would like to present to you the proclamation for what you did and what you're doing, and we appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thanks, Steve.
He said a few words. I don't know whether I can hold it to that. There were a lot of people that came together at the right time, over a period of about a year and a half, to put this together. We had people who were attending Kindred Arts of Manteca and the Modesto Concert Association. We had some people in the city government that was looking at the possibility of some type of a forming arts area. The Ripon Unified had put together a bond to build a multi-use room and later added the stage. So we had kind of things happening over a period of a year or two. We had some meetings. Eventually, 15 people ended up on the first board forum, or just recognized, are still on that board, and I just want to thank the city council for... And in behalf of all those people who started this work back in '93 for recognizing what we've done and that we've made some positive contribution to the culture and community. Thank you very much.
Okay, so now we have pulled 1.4E. So what I'm going to ask is, we have a staff report. Let me... Let me explain first what that is, if I can bear with me here. This is a project improvement agreement, Church of Christ Council to not approve the version of the project improvement agreement submitted by the Church of Christ, attachment two, and instead of proving or authorizing, the mayor to sign the proposed project improvement agreement, attachment number one. So what we're going to do is we'll have staff report. We'll have public... We'll have comments from the public, and what I would ask is that if things are being said, please try not to repeat it, because we want to make sure that we get the sense of what you're saying rather than the repetition, and then we'll come back to the council. Okay? So why don't we start out with a staff report, please?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so the Church of Christ, just a quick background of the project, submitted a use permit application to San Joaquin County in 2016. It constructed a building located out in the county, just on the outside of the Ripon city limits. On the north side of West Ripon Road, as you can see on the map here, about 150 feet west of the Jack Tone Road intersection. In early 2017, the project was approved by the county with several conditions to comply with prior to occupancy. Due to the proximity to the Ripon city limits and impacts to our local roadways, the county conditioned the project to enter into a project improvement agreement with the city for future roadway dedication and deferred frontage improvements along West Ripon Road. City staff and the church representatives have met and to try and reach an agreement, and for the most part, have, albeit one condition, which is located in section two of the project improvement agreements that you see here in front of you this evening. The triggering event, as noted in the staff version of the project improvement agreement in section two, identifies when the future dedication of a right-of-way and the improvements will be required. The church is requesting that the improvements and the land dedication not be required until development occurs on both sides of the current parcel that they're constructing on. If you look on the map, you see up above, it'd be the parcel to the left and to the right. The city's staff's position is that that triggering event be development of the east parcel only, which is the corner property on the Jack Tone and West Ripon Road intersection. Staff's also recommending that the city engineer have the authority to defer those improvements if we feel that they're not needed at that time, if we feel that there could be potential for minimal traffic impacts. So the map here, it shows the church in the middle. That parcel that you see ending in 4-0 is the corner parcel that the city, um, would be requiring that, that triggering event or be requiring the land dedication and the improvements. You know, as development continues in that area, traffic is gonna continue to, uh, increase, causing more of a problem. Um, most of you know now that, uh, we already facing kind of a, uh, heavy traffic load down West Ripon Road. And so, without putting in appropriate, uh, traffic mitigation measures, um, that can continue to get worse or stay the same, so... With that, that's basically the background. That's staff's, staff's report on, uh, on the two agreements that you see in front of you today.
Okay, I have a question before we move on. So, I just wanna make sure I understand this. So, the red dotted line would be the, for the future right-of-way, correct?
Correct. It's, that's, those are approximate locations.
Right, yeah, I get it. And so, what you're suggesting or what you're recommending is that if parcel 170-40 were to be developed at that time, at your discretion, 40 would have to give the right-of-way and we do whatever we do there. And you're proposing that the Church of Christ may or may not, depending on discretion, correct?
Correct.
Okay, the second question is, the right-of-way would go right over the top of the leach field. So, what, can you...
Well, there's, there's a proposed leach field based on the improvements that we received, um, in that location. Um, that would also need to be relocated at the time of the dedication and those improvements.
So, it would have to be moved back so many feet to, to meet the requirement then?
Correct.
Okay.
At that, at that time, um, once that triggering event, whenever that event is, they would dedicate that land and actually perform those improvements.
So, you'd want the leach field obviously to be moved?
Right, you, you would have to.
Yeah, okay, right. Any other questions, councilman, before we go to the public?
Yeah, I got a, a question.
Go ahead.
My concern on the, on the, on this whole situation here is safety. You know, I gotta believe that's where staff's coming from. And, uh, what is the footage, uh, 'cause it doesn't show anything on this diagram. Is there enough room, i- if, you know, if you go the other way where you don't put the backside in? Obviously, there's way more room here. Is there enough room to make it safe for our public and our citizens in that little small section there if, if you don't go all the way? You understand what I'm saying?
Just in front of, of the parcel ending in 4-0, is that where you're...
Yeah, exactly. I mean, 'cause it, it's, to me, it's a public safety issue. And I'm, and I think that probably everybody else probably thinks the same way, which all of us as citizens should think that way. Is there enough room there to justify that?
In our opinion, no. Um, Jack Tone Road is also gonna widen, so that, that, the corner of that parcel is gonna, is gonna shrink. It's gonna get closer to the, to the church. We've only got approximately 150 feet right now. Um, that's gonna shrink. And so, making that turn, uh, once that intersection is, is built out to its ultimate right-of-way, um, and then transitioning back into, uh, West Ripon Road, i- is really where we, we think that we need those improvements to safely get traffic back, back over to that, the, the, the one-lane road, um, or at least one direction.
And then, you know, I had asked this question before, 'cause I've, I know that roadway on the, uh, that side of the road is, uh... It's not a good roadway, but on the other side, it seems like it's in much better shape. And I talked to, uh, Mr. Warner about this and then I also talked to, I can't remember who I talked to about it, a year or two ago, 'cause I got several complaints, how beat up that road is. I was told at that time that it was Caltrans. Is that not true? Is that, I, I mean...
I think I definitely thought it was the county.
Yeah, not, I, I might use the wrong terminology there, but it was a county road, right? And that's why the maintenance or the maintaining of it wasn't as proper as the other side.
That's what we thought. As we went through the surveying and the maps for this project, we realized the city does own, um, the right-of-way all the way to the, uh, the north side of West Ripon Road.
So, back in the day when we did the improvements on the right side, we probably should've did the whole roadway.
You know, on the south side.
Yeah, you, you know what I'm talking about, because there is a substantial difference in...
Oh, yeah.
...in that road.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, my office is like a block away, so I drive that road quite a bit and I do get several complaints. And I don't know if anybody knows this, we have accidents on that streetway. Multiple, multiple accidents and trucks are through there. They were, it, it is a very dangerous intersection. I, I can't amplify how, how dangerous it is. Anyway, thank you.
Any other questions? Steve?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Steve Harram. I'm representing the Ripon Church of Christ tonight at this hearing. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to address you on this matter. Our organized presentation will consist of me sort of laying out the issue as we understand it and then the member of the congregation who's been leading the building of the church. Mr. Gentry will address you and give you his thoughts on it. I will conclude. There are many members of the congregation that are here today. Uh, they may or may not want to address you, but certainly we do want to acknowledge the fact they are your citizens and your constituents and they've come to the council meeting tonight in support of our position with respect to this. So, let me start by giving you basically the, uh, the history of this. The, uh, church filed for a use permit with the county. That permit went to the planning commission. It was approved unanimously by the county planning commission. No one spoke in opposition. There was traffic study done, which they, they had to pay for. The traffic study concluded there was not a significant traffic problem to require additional work. It did require at the request of the city of Ripon that an improvement agreement be executed. Now, it's my experience of doing this almost 40 years and I would say 40 years ago, I, I looked like Robert Redford and did not have any white hair. That shows what city councils do to me, that those are just a standard provision. We see them all the time. It's no big deal. I did not represent the church at that time. They agreed to it. Had I represented them, I would've told them not to object to that. It's just a standard thing we do all the time. Church then brought me in, is when they were presented with the improvement agreement from the city. The city asked that in addition to signing the agreement, the church pay over $400,000 in, in city capital facility fees. So, in other words, this project was, according to the city, should pay the county capital facility fees and pay the city capital facility fees of excess of $400,000. They asked for my opinion of that. Uh, I, I indicated that I thought that condition was unlawful and unconstitutional. Uh, we communicated that to the city staff. Apparently, there was subsequently a meeting with the planning director of the county and the deputy county council of the county and we were told that we should meet with the city, that we've had these issues worked out and that everyone can enter into an improvement agreement. Uh, the city manager, the city administrator was quite gracious. He did set up a meeting. Unfortunately, it got canceled because members of the staff could not attend. That's fine. It happens all the time. Everyone came to the meeting with whomever they thought should be there. Three members of the city were there. Three members of our team were there, our engineer, Mr. Gentry, and myself. We walked through the issues. Uh, we had to work out issues. I will say everyone was gracious and civil and, and, and worked as hard as they could in a collaborative manner to try to work out the problems. Uh, every, everyone was doing their best, I will say. At the end of it, the contentious issue was the timing of the improvement. And we went around with a number of ideas and finally, it was suggested that it ought to be done at the right time. And let's ask ourselves, what is the right time? And the conclusion of the group was the right time is it should be put in when improvements are put in on parcel 40 and parcel 37. All those parcels are vacant. And we shook on the deal and said, that is the deal, that all, when the other two parcels put theirs in, we have to put ours in. That was the deal. Mr. Gentry went back to the church council. The church council approved that. We then got the improvement agreement from the city attorney and it said if either 37 or 40 go forward, then we had to put in our improvements instead of both. And, and my client called quite distressed with that. I told him, I, sometimes things get drafted wrong. It happens in life. Lawyers are not perfect, as hard as that is to believe. And I suggested that perhaps that was just a drafting or scriven or error. I would call the city attorney and I'm sure that was a mistake because we'd all agreed it was both, not either. I did call the city attorney and he acknowledged that in fact was the agreement that was reached at our meeting, but indicated, well, we changed our mind. We want something else. We want it to be either. My thought, which I did not express is, I wish I could negotiate that way and make it much easier just to change things unilaterally. And at that point, uh, basically discussions ended at that point, uh, because the church felt that a, an arrangement and a compromise that they had reached was not being respected. Uh, I then suggested that indeed we amend the agreement prepared by the city attorney and essentially change one word. Change the word from either to both, which reflected the original agreement of the parties. And we submitted that to the city attorney and, and that agreement is before you tonight, together with now a new agreement that apparently, which we've not seen, that the city attorney has adopted. Because now apparently the agreement says that we have to build our improvements when Lot 40 goes forward or as before it said of either 37 or 40. And I don't know if there are other changes in that agreement. That agreement has not been shared with us unfortunately. So, it, it seems to me there are really a couple of issues that I would respectfully ask that you consider tonight. Number one, as the elected leaders of the city, how do you respond when your staff works out an issue with an applicant and a landowner and then they end up not following through with that? How, as the leaders of the city government elected by the people, do you want to do that? And I will tell you, I think it sends a very poor message to the public and to the development community and to landowners if in fact we can go and meet with staff to work out problems that otherwise you would have to deliberate on if we are, if we fear that the staff can change its mind unilaterally and a deal isn't a deal. And all that means is that over time, more and more issues like this will come before you and I don't think you want to be dealing with these issues on a regular basis. I think you want to know that your staff's word is good and when they shake hands and say, "This is what we're going to propose to the city council," that in fact, that's good. Otherwise, people are gonna bypass your staff and they're gonna come directly to you because what's the point of negotiating an agreement with people who then change their mind? There'll be no incentive to work with staff and that's really bad for any city government of any size. The second argument is simply that, that having reached this agreement, uh, that, that we need to know that when staff makes a deal with a property owner, that that deal will in fact be given strong weight by the city council. Otherwise, again, uh, if these deals that staff make, which presumably they have an idea of the values and the thoughts of the city, are not being respected, then there's no reason to deal with staff. So, in an odd sort of a way, and I know this sounds backwards, but in fact, it's really the case, this is an instance where you should endorse the compromise reached by your staff at that meeting because that's really in the long-term interest of the city to support its staff and not simply take a position and endorse the city's right to simply have the staff change its mind and do something different because it erodes the credibility of the staff dealing with property owners in the future. And then finally, I would just simply say right is right. And I was raised with the idea that if you shake your hand and you make a deal, you live through it, you do it. That's what you're supposed to do. And at the end of the day, what we're really saying is, we're asking for what's right is right. And we shook hands and we did the deal and just as you, all of you who are in business know, you know, you're only as good as your word. If you perform what you promised you are, that's what you wanna do. That's the reputation you wanna have at the end of the day. And we're asking in this instance, that in fact, the city's word be good and it be followed through and instead, there just aren't any unilateral changes. So, with that in mind, I'd like, uh, Mr. Gentry to also speak, if he would come forward. And, you know, my wife, who's a dairy farmer, always reminds me that people don't always believe lawyers. So, he was also at the meetings. And Mr. Gentry is a, is a 20-plus-year officer in the United States Marine Corps and, and you can decide that someone who served our country during that period is, is telling you what happened at that meeting and whether or not it was correct and whether we would saying is the true and correct story.
Mr. Mayor, councilman, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Before I begin, I would like, please, for all the members of the Ripon Church of Christ in the audience to please stand. We're here this evening because, putting it plain and simply, we're tired of being lied to. And we're trying to get things done so that we can go back to having a regular worship service at our church, which is being built. Thank you. You may sit down. Mr. Harram told you a lot of things that I was already gonna say, but in May of 2016, I was asked to be project manager of this building project. And it's not that I have any expertise. I'm a retired Marine Corps helicopter pilot. After the service, I spent 19 years teaching high school agriculture in Southern California. Retired and moved up here in the summer of 2015. So, I don't have any experience in that aspect of it, but the reason I was told and asked to be the project manager is that I was a Marine and that I get the job done. I'm trying to do that to the best of my ability. In the fall of 2016, our church is moving forward with this project. We went back to the county. We, uh, updated our application. Uh, we had changed the size of the building that we originally had and we were given a new set of conditions of approval. In those conditions of approval, it said that we were to, uh, offer an irrevocable offer of dedication of 70 feet for road improvements, uh, for this project. Having looked at it and studied with, uh, studied it with our civil engineer, it was determined that that 70 feet went through the existing house that is on the property where our preacher now resides. In discussion with some of your staff, I said, "How can this be? Can we move it? Can we adjust the, uh, distance of the road?" And all the answers I got was no. It was finally determined after I went back to the county, talked to Public Works, that I found out that the county has never required a irrevocable offer of dedication to go through somebody's house. So, when I brought that before your staff, attitude changed. Was told that we could work it out. And so, that our upcoming meeting on 16 March of 2017 with the county planning commission, don't say a word, don't raise any feathers, you ever all get worked out. Come to find out, a few weeks later, we got together, went over some ideas and the staff proposed that they are going to cut out a portion and leave the house. And I liked that idea. And that I was told that we would lose a portion of our driveway. Understandable. When we got the initial project improvement agreement from Mr. Pease, it did not have anything about the house being left. So, I wrote, uh, brought that to their attention and it was corrected, but the point of the driveway being taken away was still there. A major concern, as Mr. Harram has already pointed out, was the, uh, city development fees. Uh, getting the county involved, that got relieved. And it came to when finally that we had our meeting with the city on 23 May of 18. In that meeting, it was discussed why the road improvements should not be tied to a specific date. According to our civil engineer, the worst thing that you can do on road improvements is to make them and let them set and do nothing. They deteriorate and that's not good. So, we need to try to tie it to a specific event. And it came to agreement by all parties there that the triggering mechanism that would cause us, the church, to do our road improvements would be that the properties on both sides of us would have to do their road improvements. It makes sense. Makes sense for Jack Tone to do the road improvements at the same time. That's what was agreed upon. And when we received the, uh, project improvement agreement, that had been changed, as Mr. Harram has said. Mr. Mayor, all I ask is that, I hope you're a man of integrity and that you strive to put and place integrity high on the list of your staff and insist on that they honor the word that we had. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just conclude, uh, uh, first of all, I do have to say that although I'm sure Mr. Gentry was selected because he's a tough Marine, it's my experience at my church, if you wanna be the head of the committee, don't show up to the organizational meeting and everyone else appoints you. And I think maybe Mr. Gentry failed to show up at the right meeting and that's how he became the chair of this. I, at least that's how that works in my church. how that works in my church. Let me just conclude and say this. This is an unfortunate situation. I'm sorry we're here. We shouldn't be here. I've been doing this for 40 years as a development attorney. I've never made a presentation in front of a city council on an improvement agreement before. This is the first time. And all I'm suggesting to you is that for the going forward, for future landowners to be able to be able to deal with staff and work out problems so you don't hear everything, it's important that arrangements and deals that are made with staff, that staff believes are good, can be presented to you, instead of that landowner fearing that they're going to be reneged on, and we're starting from the beginning again. Hence, there's no reason to work with staff if that is going to happen. You need to have credibility, and you need to have certainty in the process. And if you endorse the staff position tonight, you're eroding the credibility of the staff. We have only one traffic report with respect to this road, and that traffic report was done by the county, by an outside consultant, studied by the county, was available to the city of Ripon, and that traffic study said that they did not have to put the improvements in now. There was not a traffic issue. And I would point out to you that the city of Ripon had numerous opportunities to comment on the project, and never made a comment with respect to the traffic on either of those two roads in relationship to this project. So I would just urge you to endorse tonight and authorize the mayor and the council to sign the improvement agreement that we drafted, which changes one word, changes from either to both. Otherwise, we're in complete agreement with the staff, and we ask that you do that, because it's the right thing to do. That concludes our presentation. There may be other members of the congregation which should address you, but unless you have any questions, that concludes our presentation.
Any questions of Steve? Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Anybody else want to make some comments, or? Okay. Why don't we turn it back to staff? I sound like there's some conflicts that I'm hearing may have happened. So can you address some of the issues, and then we'll turn it over to questions?
First of all, I think in that meeting, staff has made every effort to work with the church to come to a consensus on how to do this. Obviously, there's a lot of discussions, and I think that was mentioned. There's been a lot of movement on different things. Fees, for example, was brought up. I think initially, we had put some fees in there, just so they have an understanding of what the magnitude could be if they developed in Ripon at some point in the future. What we came up with is that we have language in there now that says they're responsible for the fees that are lawful at the time when they develop. So that was just staff trying to communicate an order of magnitude of what those fees could be. The other thing that was mentioned was the house. And the, I don't remember, Ken was out there, too. I don't remember anything specific from the county telling us about their vocal offer dedication. When we talked with Mr. Gentry and men out there, I had no idea that that was something that had been discussed. Ours was only trying to work with the church and resolve the ability to maintain the house for a period of time. The idea of us not being honest in these meetings, I think we're very professional, and I think when we meet with very landowners, developers, we do everything we can to try to accommodate them. And I think in this meeting, we had no maps out, we had no specifics out showing parcels or anything. It was a general discussion of how to develop a consensus. I think from my point of view, and what I recall from that meeting, the only commitment from staff is that we'll take that discussion into consideration and develop another draft that we would send to, which we did. And then Mr. Herram came back and had concerns, as he mentioned. And what we did with that, we said, we understand your concerns, we're going to add some language in there, because I agree, I think Mr. Gentry said it, there's no reason for the improvements to come in and not be needed. So if the development that was going to come in on parcel 40 did not have the traffic intensity that we're all expecting to have, or any problems, if another study happens at that point, and the improvements aren't required, and we could defer those, the draft was revised again to add that language, and the city engineer has the ability to defer that, depending on the traffic intensity. And that was sent to Mr. Herram. He got that draft.
Okay. Who wants to talk first?
I have one question. In looking at the map, where's the house relative to the red dotted line?
Approximately 10 feet.
Beyond that, so the house would stay?
Is it where it says future?
Red dotted line is 70 feet from the center line of West Ripon Road.
I, that's not my question. Where it says future right-of-way limit, is that the front end of the house, just below the word limit?
Looks like it is.
Yeah, that's approximately where it's at.
So in other words, if the red dotted line is put in place, the house stays? Or, I mean, it's not?
The house stays, and there's a room for sidewalk to attach to the curb and still get a full?
All right. And I have a couple of comments, more than anything else. If there was an error made in that conversation, and that error was made by the staff, it was that they never should have agreed to anything, because they don't make that decision. We do. Every one of these agreements, whether it's yours or anybody else's, comes here and goes through this same process. What they bring to us is a recommendation, and you have the ability to talk to us about whether you agree or disagree, but the decision is ours, not theirs. So the idea that they sat there and lied to somebody, I don't buy it, first of all, but second of all, they can't. They can't shake your hand, they can't sign anything, they can't do anything except reach some sort of an agreement and bring it here, which is what they did. And now it's our problem to deal with, without throwing barbs at people. That's all.
Some clarification. Since they were proposing, the church proposing that improvements for the frontage of the church site wouldn't be done until both 37 and 40 developed. Am I correct? 37 is a residence, right? So is it owned by someone that is planning on developing it? So more than likely, that for the next foreseeable future probably isn't going to change to begin with. And our point was, it's likely that the corner lot, Lot 40, will develop, and its distance isn't sufficient to create the improvements needed on its own. If 37 didn't develop, so you would develop the church frontage as well as Lot 40 when 40 develops, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Well, as an engineer who does civil site improvements, that's what I would expect as well. So I, I mean, my perspective, that's what I would expect to happen to begin with, is that when Lot 40 developed, or when the church site developed to begin with, you'd put all of it in, not defer it all. I mean, I think deferring any of it to a future time is probably a generous offer to begin with. So that's my perspective as someone who does this as well, as a live-for-a-living.
So what you're suggesting, as an engineer, would be that if 40 were developed, that would spark the need, then, for the church to put their side, not 40 and 37?
Right, because 40 doesn't have sufficient distance probably to create the improvements needed to make that turn and transition and everything, I suppose, right? Right. Once Jack Tone's expanded and West Ripon's expanded, you would have this little short transition of lane that wouldn't get you anything other than accidents. So...
But the language of the agreement does say that if concrete evidence is produced, that that development will not lead to your scenario. The city has the ability to defer the development until later.
To defer further, right. Which is a generous offer, again, as far as I'm concerned.
Ken, what is 40 zoned as?
40, actually, 37, 38, and 40 are all zoned for community commercial.
Community commercial? Okay. Any interest in 40 right now?
There has been from time to time. Just as recent as...
But nothing in the hopper or anything?
As recent as a few months ago, but there's quite a few improvements that would have to be done along Jack Tone and West Ripon Road there, so that, you know, there's a little bit of, obviously, quite a bit of right-of-way dedication and improvements that need to be done. So it is a difficult site to develop.
Okay.
If you look at 40, is there any improvements that would be done on the Jack Tone side?
Yeah, so Jack Tone is actually 102-foot right-of-way for the city of Ripon, and West Ripon Road is 140-foot right-of-way road. So 140-foot is the width of River Road. If you go out to River Road, it's three lanes each direction. 102 is like a Fulton Avenue, two lanes each direction with a median. So there would be dedication and improvements along Jack Tone, as well as West Ripon for that.
So what point would you require somebody up and down Jack Tone Road to do improvements at?
Whenever they develop their property. So if 40 were to come in and develop, they would have to put the improvements in.
Here's the problem I'm having. I can't see where this thing would be. So if 40 were to develop, then you're taking that right line over there near the 40, you're bringing that in, right? Because you're going to develop Jack Tone, you're shrinking the whole thing down.
Four lanes and a sidewalk.
Huh?
Two lanes and a sidewalk.
So that's going to come in 20 or 30 feet to be, that's going to come in 20 or 30 feet, then it'd be, correct?
Correct.
So that's coming, so you're going to have, until the one above it develops, you're going to have it straight, and you're going to jag over?
Or you put a transition in that.
Yeah, you put a transition in that area there.
How far in does that come? I can't get a sense. I mean, I'm trying to figure out if that makes a big difference or not, but I can't tell just looking at the map.
Would the stoplight have to be moved?
Yes.
That'll give you an idea how far.
Well, a stoplight gets run over all the time now. I mean, I have clients who get an accident all the time. My daughter took a picture of a truck running it over a couple of times. You know, I really have a huge problem, and I've talked to staff about it over the last week. I've talked to some citizens that belong to the church. And, God, I'm disillusioned about the fact, I know staff wouldn't lie, but then in a sense, I'm saying that everybody else that caught up already lied. But to me, it's a safety issue, but I guess where I'm coming from is, is there a, is there a safe issue? Is there enough room, if that corner develops, which, in my opinion, it probably won't develop in my lifetime, but it may, because the people that just bought that property have done improvements to that house, that makes me think that they're not going anywhere, which is really not an issue, but me, as an elected official councilman, I know that area, my office is two blocks down on the other side. It is a bad issue. Is there enough room there to make it somewhat safe to agree on what they want? That would be, you know, can we look at that? Is there, is there some kind of, or is there a, I don't know. I know it's got to be done eventually, and I think the church knows that, too, but...
The agreement provides for that. The agreement says that if 40 develops, and the answer to your question is yes, that accommodations can be made without doing anything to 38, that it's left alone. The agreement also says, if 40 develops, and there is evidence that safety cannot be maintained, that 38 then puts the improvements in. It's there.
That's attachment number one.
No, I get that, you know, but...
You haven't seen that, Steve, that new agreement that?
We saw an earlier version, but this version is different from the version that was presented.
Okay, because we have a version that we have in our package.
The version in your package is the same that was previously presented, it just has this additional deferral option into it. I believe that it was shared with their office, and there were some exchanges.
So can I make this comment? That we defer this and give you an opportunity to take a look at it?
I agree.
And then we'll come back? Look, I don't want to, I don't want to go against what staff says. I also don't want to impede upon something, that maybe it makes some sense if you take a look at the new agreement. Maybe it won't.
All I can say is not, yeah, whatever it is, the agreement we got said, if either of them develops. This one apparently says if 40 develops. We've not seen that form of agreement.
Okay, and you're saying there is, there is agreement within our packages a little bit?
Ken, if we defer it, it would come back in September, and that part of the discussion would be gone. They would have seen it. Now it's down to the question. Then I'll make that motion, that we defer action on this item until the September meeting.
And we'll get, okay, we have a motion, we second, and then we'll get you the agreement, okay? Steve, take a look at it. Do we need to?
Oh, I got to do this right.
Move to defer. We want to be fair, so we want to make sure that you have an opportunity to take a look at maybe what's been changed, rather than voting yes or no, and so, okay. So thanks for coming out and presenting. Thank you for giving us that. And we'll come back then in September, take a look at it. Maybe, maybe it'll be resolved after you take a look at the agreement. Yeah, I appreciate your comments. Staff doesn't make those decisions, and I, hopefully, they're not being sneaky behind everybody's back, and I don't think they would be. I've been doing this for a long time with them, but, you know, sometimes things are misunderstood, but we'll get you the agreement and have you take a look at it. All right? Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. The rest of it's boring, if you want to stick around. Well, I didn't mean it that way. I was just, you know, encouraging them to... Okay, we're now going to go to item... 2A. Public hearing to consider an amendment to Title 16 to develop code by amending Chapter 16.24 Industrial Districts, approved or recommended amendment to Chapter 16.24 Industrial Districts Table blah blah, based on the findings in the staff report pertaining to churches and light industrial with a use permit. Is that, Ken?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. There's two parts to this on the agenda. Actually, we do have this public hearing portion of it, and then later in the agenda, if the council so wishes, there is a first reading and introduction of the actual ordinance.
So what I'm doing is now, you're going to make a present staff report, we'll open the public hearing, then we'll close the public hearing, and we'll come back to us.
So we did receive a request from one church, who is the applicant on this, to consider amending the city of Ripon's municipal code to allow church uses to locate in the city's light industrial district. They are looking at the Power Play Arena, which is in the light industrial district, to purchase that building and move their church, which is on Repona Avenue, over to that facility. Basically, this very issue is an ongoing debate across the country, where many communities are grappling with whether to allow religious groups to locate in industrial centers. Cities do reserve the right to, obviously, establish zones for their community and establish a list of permitted uses in each of those districts. The basic purpose and function of zoning is to, obviously, divide a community into residential, commercial, office, and industrials districts or zones, and for the most part, to separate uses from each other that are not consistent with each other, and to keep some of those to a minimum. Every city handles their industrial zones a little differently. Like, some communities, Ripon tends to treat light industrial zones as a catchall area, where many different uses are permitted to co-locate. While staff believes that churches could locate in some light industrial-zoned areas, not all our light industrial-zoned areas would be a good fit for this type of assembly use either. Additionally, cities cannot discriminate against churches. There's Ralupa laws, which is the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, which requires that religious assemblies and institutions must be treated... which requires, um, that religious assemblies and institutions must be treated the same as non-religious assemblies and institutions under, under the zoning laws. This means that anywhere a city, uh, permits a community center, a theater, or other facility for non-religious, religious assembly, it must also allow a church, uh, for an assembly use as well. Currently, our code does allow, uh, for, in the light industrial zone, does allow for banquet facilities, uh, trade and vocational schools, uh, studios such as art, studios, boxing, dance, gymnastics, and recreational facilities, all of which are somewhat of an assembly-type use. So therefore, after a much research, staff is recommending allowing the church, uh, allowing churches in our light indus- industrial zones with the approval of a use permit, um, by the planning commission. Uh, this, this, the use permit process, uh, which is how the, the city handles banquet facilities in that same zone, uh, provides us with the tools necessary to evaluate the locations of those and come up with an appropriate recommendation, uh, when they come before the planning commission. The planning commission did take action on this item at the July sixteenth meeting, and with a five oh vote, voted to recommend that the city council approve this as well. So at this point, that concludes my staff report, and I turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing if anybody wants to make some comments in favor or against, and then I'm gonna turn it back over to the council. So if anybody wants to come up and speak on this issue? Not everybody at one time, okay.
I'll speak.
I'm gonna close, you're not the public. We have to train them every council meeting. I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I'm gonna turn it over to council.
My only question is, and I believe that I already know the answer to this, is there's not that much traffic over there now. Is there enough parking there to withstand a three-hundred, four-hundred, uh, uh, it's a big building, and that would be my only question.
Uh, yeah, there is, actually. So as part of a separate application, they did, they did apply for a use permit, which is contingent upon this being approved tonight. Um, we did look at the, the facility and what they're proposing for the capacity size of the, um, of the sanctuary, uh, which is two-hundred seats, which it does have ample parking for that. If they were to go over that, if they wanna expand the sanctuary seating to above two-hundred, they would have to come back in front of the planning commission for additional approval, which most likely would require, uh, additional parking. So they would have to be looking at, uh, purchasing some more land to do additional parking. At this point, they, they are, they are adequately parked though, for that, that site.
Thank you.
So I'll make.
I have one question.
Okay, go ahead.
If this ordinance is adopted, simply because we've added churches to the list, it's a possibility, not a mandate. In other words, if a church wanted to go into this, an area like this again, they would have to go through the same process, and they could be denied if there was factual justification for denial.
That's correct.
Okay.
So I'm gonna make a comment, which is really interesting when you said that this is kind of up in debate through the cities. I travel to probably forty cities a year, and every city I go to has one of these in an industrial building. We just sold a building in, in San Ramon, and it's an office condo, in fact. And the biggest thing was the parking, and it was about whether or not you get some cross-parking and things like that. Cause on Sundays, typically, the office buildings weren't being used, and there was plenty of parking. And the city said, as long as there's plenty of parking. So you go to most industrial sites, as long as there's plenty of parking, it's never been an issue. I see them all over the place, so I, I, I think it's a great idea. I'm glad we're doing it. So that's what I would say, from my perspective. Well, I'm, I'm glad we're discussing it, proposing to do it. There's always someone's gotta.
I know, you're, you're kind of.
Okay, we have a motion that we approve.
Uh, the recommended amendment to chapter sixteen point two-four. We have a motion, we have a second. And it passes with a five oh vote. Thank you. Don't leave yet, don't leave yet. There's another piece. This is the public hearing to consider an amendment to Title sixteen to develop code by amending chapter sixteen point eight-six, second dwelling units to compliant with recent change in state law regarding such structures, including renaming the chapter to accessory dwelling units pursuant to state law. Uh, so again, what we'll do is we'll have staff report, which there was a lot of red changes. We'll open it at the public hearing, and then we'll come back to, to council, so.
I'm not gonna bore you with reading through the whole staff report. I did send out, I think some time ago, the state sent out this, uh, whole memorandum about accessory dwelling units. The state did pass, uh, two laws, and then they came back through with an additional law. But essentially, there's two laws that deal with accessory dwelling units, or what we used to call secondary, second dwelling units. Um, and then they came back through with a, another bill saying you can enact a, a, an ordinance for, um, junior accessory dwelling units, which shows that it's smaller units. Um, so we opted just to have one, uh, one ordinance that dealt with all of them. Accessory dwelling units can go down to what they call an efficiency size, which is a hundred and fifty square foot in size. Um, and up to, I think we have a thousand square foot max on, in our ordinance for accessory dwelling units. Essentially, the, the changes that are in front of you this evening, it's kind of the minimum requirements required by law. Uh, we've tried to obviously meet state law, but also keep some integrity in our, in our ordinance to where we can make sure our residential neighborhoods, uh, when these do come in, fit within them and match the main houses and, and keep the, uh, quality and stuff that I think we've all grown to appreciate here in Ripon. So, um, if you have some specific questions on some of the changes that are in the staff report, I'd be happy to answer those. If not, like I said, I'm not gonna go through all those for you unless you have a question on them or not.
I have two comments. One, and there was a lot to read, maybe I missed it, but it talked about bedrooms, but it didn't talk about bathrooms or anything else. Is that in there?
No, it's not. Um, accessory dwelling units, I think, do, if you look at the definition, does talk about required things with, to be considered an accessory dwelling unit. And, and one is a kitchen facility and, and a bathing and restroom facility. Um, we, we actually restrict, uh, an accessory dwelling unit within our ordinance to be a maximum of two bedrooms. Uh, we don't think, uh, some of these that are a thousand square feet should be.
Right.
More than two bedrooms. That's something the planning commission had.
The other comment I would make was, there's, there's, there's a requirement that you can't rent it for less than thirty days. In other words, you don't want it to be a motel. But just as a caution, I travel throughout the state with a bunch of examiners that work for me, and they do Airbnb, and guess what? Now, when I started reading this, I figured out what they're doing. They rent the main house. It's not the auxiliary unit, but you get the unit in the back. So they are renting it night to night, week at a time, but they're circumventing it through not listing it on an agreement. I'm just saying, there's a way to get around it. I mean, if people violate the rules, they violate the rules, but I'm just saying there's a way to.
Yeah, and I guess, I mean, I guess that could occur. What, the owner of these units.
Can, can we write something in there that says they can't even do that?
Well, the owner of the unit has to record, um, a restriction against the property, and they have to live in one of the units. So the owner would have to live in the second, or the accessory dwelling unit, and if they're gonna rent out the main house, like you're saying. They have to reside on the property.
Okay, fine, yeah, yeah.
They're not gonna, the only way you're gonna stop it is to come up with an Airbnb, with a Airbnb ordinance, which is what towns are starting to figure out.
And I stop at every stop sign. I mean, you know, no, I do, chief, really, I do, honest. Okay, that's the only thing I have. Okay, I'm gonna open up for public comment. If anybody wants to address this, sing none, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to council.
You ready?
Yes, sir.
I have questions. And I'll go by page. Uh, on the second page, there's mention about, uh, fees for sewer water and all that hookup. And it says you can't hit them for the full value. Have we figured out what our value's gonna be, or is that something we're gonna have to figure out?
I'll tell you what, we've been, it's been a big realm on these things. When, when Ernie was here as the planning director, uh, when people wanted to do second dwelling units, it was actually we would charge them the multifamily fee, which was, um, quite a bit of money to, to have, to have one of these units. Cornerstone built out there where the alleys are, uh, is Mark Wilber's project, and he started incorporating some of these, uh, second dwelling units in, in their, in some of, in some of the units out there to meet affordable requirements. And at that time, we didn't charge any fees. So we don't see a significant, a, a number of the, enough number of these, so we actually just went through, and, and we're not charging any development fees for these units. Um, I think since I've been planning director for twelve years now, I think I've seen probably four get built over that time period. If you do wanna charge fees, if you start seeing these things becoming more prevalent, and, and you wanna make sure we're meeting the full impacts of these, you would have to go through a, and go through the AV sixteen hundred and justify what you're charging for them. So there would be a fee study we would have to do and incorporate that into our, our fee structure.
Okay. On the next page at the top, it says side and rear setbacks sufficient for fire safety.
Yes.
Who decides what that is?
Basically, uh, this, first of all, that, that section that you're referring to is referring to, uh, accessory dwelling units that are constructed within existing living area or accessory floor area. So it would have to be an existing building that they're converting over to an accessory dwelling unit. So that, we do have some, um, garages in the old part of town that are built on a property line. At that point, they would just, they would have to meet the building code. So as soon as you start inhabiting some of those spaces, that, you're looking at firewalls that would have to be constructed or remodeled into those spaces for that. And that, and I believe that's what the fire department would look at as far as what's sufficient for fire safety.
So there is some flexibility depending on the situation, but it's gotta basically make the fire department happy.
There is to an extent. I mean, obviously, when you start looking at changing the, uh, the, the, um, occupancy of a building like that, I mean, the, the building code is gonna mandate, like, if you're within five feet of a property line, it's gonna mandate that you have to make, you have to turn it into a firewall and such like that.
Okay. A little farther down, it talks about a ministerial process. I don't think that means a church. What does that mean?
Ministerial's an over-the-counter type permit, so they could come in, it doesn't mean it's instantaneously, but they has, it's reviewed at staff level. We kinda check the boxes to make sure they're compliant with the ordinance, and then it's, uh, they can be issued a permit. Discretionary is something that goes in front of planning commissioner, city council, for you guys to vote yes or no on.
Okay. And a little farther down, it talks about increased floor area of an attached ADU. When I was reading all that, for instance, farther on, it talks about the number of floors. If I don't go outside the existing floor plan, how high can I go?
Two stories. It, it falls with, it falls back into, um, if you're talking about the adding on to your existing structure, then you're falling back to what the building code is, and our zoning laws are for the main structure, and that's two stories in height.
Okay. There's another place in there where it talks about added square footage. If I have a house that has two thousand square feet on the first floor, has a second floor unit that's four hundred square feet, can I expand it to two thousand square feet, or, or twelve hundred, cause that's your limit?
Actually, yeah, you can. Yep. You can expand.
You can't stop me.
Nope. The only restrictions you have there is if you're adding on to the main unit and creating the accessory dwelling unit in there, is it all has to meet the setbacks of the main unit. So you have, typically, you have a twenty-foot front yard setback, a twenty or thirty-foot rear yard setback, and a five or, a twelve or a five and a five, depending on where you're at, within what part of town you're at.
So in other words, if I had a thousand square foot first floor and a four hundred square foot second floor, I couldn't expand beyond the thousand square feet and put a twelve hundred square foot, uh, unit on the second floor?
You, you could not, in a sen, you could actually only build half the square footage of your main unit. So it's, the thousand is the, is the max, and, and basically.
My main unit's fourteen hundred.
Well, so divide that in half, fifty percent, seven hundred is what you can add on.
So I can't exceed that even though I stay inside?
Correct.
Yeah, the, just to clarify, it is maximum of a thousand square feet or fifty percent of the main unit, square footage.
I didn't see that. That's, this thing was confusing.
I didn't see that either.
I'm trying to figure out what I, what people can get, are gonna try to get away with.
So if you have two thousand square feet, you can go a thousand, if you have fourteen hundred, you can go seven hundred? Why? Why would we stop them to do that if they wanna add the whole?
That's the law, right?
No.
That was my question. Could you do that if it was on the second floor?
If you're a thousand feet, you go the second story with a thousand feet, you haven't even changed the footprint.
If you had four hundred, if you had a thousand and four hundred.
Yeah, you can add, you can only add a hundred according to what we're talking.
No, three hundred.
Well, if you have a thousand on the bottom, the maximum of five hundred.
The language that's in the ordinance, it's the minimum square footage of an efficiency unit. Efficiency unit is defined by building, uh, a health and safety section, and it's a hundred and fifty square feet at this time. That's the minimum size you can go. Maximum square footage is half the square footage of the primary unit or a thousand square feet, whichever is less. So if you have a fourteen hundred square foot main unit, and you're gonna add on or build another accessory unit somewhere on the lot, or even add on to make an accessory unit, seven hundred feet is gonna be the max you can do on that house.
But he's talking about going up though.
But if you have a three thousand square foot house, you can.
No, I get that, but if, but if you go, but if you're going to a second story, you have a thousand square foot bottom, and you wanna make a second story.
Define, okay, the accessory, the accessory dwelling unit defined in that second story space can only be seven hundred square feet. You can add on to your house. I mean, you can add on a thousand feet, and seven hundred of it's accessory dwelling structure.
I get it.
And, and three hundred of it's part of your house, you wanna add another master bedroom or something.
If I had my thousand square foot first floor and my four hundred square foot second floor, I couldn't add seven hundred square feet, cause I only got six hundred square feet available?
Well, yeah, unless you add a little bit more to the bottom story.
Well, yeah, but now we're gonna start playing games. Let's, I, I don't like that. Well, I shouldn't say that. As I read this, these junior ed, what are they? Junior what?
Junior accessory dwelling units.
Are not allowed.
No, they are allowed. We just didn't, we just didn't develop any standards for a junior accessory dwelling unit, because you can, you can actually establish lesser standards for some of these junior accessory dwelling units if you desire.
Junior accessory dwelling units are inside the main unit.
I know, but that was my big question, is even though we don't have an ordinance, can somebody build one, since the law says they can?
It would, it would still comply with this ADU ordinance.
So we may wanna look at some standards here before long, cause otherwise you will end up with a shed in somebody's living room.
As long as they keep the door closed.
Essentially, what the law did when they, when they passed the bill for junior accessory dwelling units is allowed, it allowed jurisdictions to put even lesser standards on those if they desired to. They didn't have to. You don't, you're not mandated to have a junior accessory dwelling unit ordinance. But if you wanted to have something that was even less restrictive, so you can kind of encourage the building of these units, you could have a separate ordinance for junior accessory dwelling units, uh, separate from the accessory dwelling. We chose not to do that. They're all kinda rolled into one, they all have to meet the same requirements.
You got this, you got your thing in front of you, cause the next one I'm gonna have, you're gonna have to look.
Somebody in San Francisco or LA.
Knocking on your door, man, I build these things right now. Zero?
I tell you, they're all over the Bay Area.
About four in the last twelve years.
They're all over the Bay Area.
You go to, I go to a cog meetings and stuff, and people in a lot of places are starting, they're coming.
Well, their housing's so expensive.
People look at them as a way to make money and a way to house people for a lot less money.
It's actually not a bad idea. I might do it in my house.
Well.
Daniel's doing one, so I can move in, sell my house.
Rent's gonna be more expensive than mortgage though.
Your table, second page, where it says setbacks, standard lots, the far right column. Is that language in the law, or is that the language that the planning commission recommended?
The second, you're, you're talking.
The ten feet from the rear line, blah, 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 cause I remember that being talked about at the planning commission meeting. Is that their language, or is that the law?
That's, uh, planning commission's language.
Okay. Does the law have anything?
Uh, the law basically says you're not supposed to put such a restrictive setback on it that you would preclude building these units.
Right, I remember that.
So they leave that discretion to the, the jurisdictions to decide. But if you tried to come in here and say you want the rear setback of these accessory dwelling units to be thirty feet, so you essentially can't build any, the state would come back in and tell you're not in compliance with the law.
And these are okay till they get challenged?
We, after adopting this, we have to send this up to the state, which I think, uh, you guys have already kinda talked to people at the state on, proposed.
I've been talking through some of these issues, and we've worked out what limitations we can. So we've kind of vetted it out, some of these issues with them already, but we will have to submit once it's approved, and they'll go through.
They got a high powers looking at this for us. I feel so much better.
Last question, and it's right below that, setback lots with a, a rear alley. One of the things that the planning commission talked a lot about was, A, how close to this stuff, and what impact you might have if you built a second story over a garage on the neighbors. When we did those apartments out there on North Ripon Road, by River Road, that was the issue that the senior, or the thing next on the west came. Could we put in there, build a way, but you can't put windows that would look down into somebody else's yard? I know you talked about them being six feet high. build a way, but you can't put windows that would look down into somebody else's yard? I know you talked about them being six feet high. A six-foot high window is no problem for me.
So that's language that was in, that was kind of brought over from our, our previous ordinance, as an intent to make sure that you couldn't be kind of looking into your neighbor's yard. I think an average window at six foot in height, the average person, myself, couldn't see through it. But, um, you know, you can actually restrict that even more if you'd like and say no window spacing, that kind of what we call the narrow side setback, so it's into the neighbor's yard. They would just have to design their units appropriately, because if you're, if you're looking at a bedroom, uh, you do have to have a window to be able to get out. You could put that facing, you know, the main unit's front yard instead of the neighboring yard.
Yeah.
Right, or the alley. I mean, there's ways to design, and they just have to know that going into it. So that could be something that the, uh, if the council so desires, we could modify that a little bit.
I think we ought to look at it, because otherwise, I'm just looking back over the time. I, those are the kinds of things that bring people in here. It's not that they object to the fact that somebody's putting a second story over their garage. They object to the fact somebody's going to be looking down at my backyard while my kids are out in the swimming pool. And I think if we can cut that out, it just saves everybody a problem. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. I forget which one we're on now.
2B.
Anybody? I'm kidding. Any other comments? Dean, Jake, Daniel? Okay.
I'll move the recommended action.
Second.
Okay.
With the changes that, this is coming back again, right?
Yeah, so this is the first reading and introduction of the ordinance tonight. If you make that motion as we get, when we get to item three B, that we amend that language, the second reading and adoption will include that language. It's a minor enough change.
Okay.
Where we can include that.
All right.
Three A, this ordinance amends title 16, chapter 16.24, industrial districts used able to allow for church uses in light industrial district upon approval of use permit.
This is the, yeah, first reading and introduction of the ordinance. You guys had just heard the public hearing on.
I can't get up.
I can't get-
Can you, uh, give me to vote this, put this up, please?
There it is. I'll move to approve it.
Okay. Now it's done.
No, they're not allowed to go yet. You've stayed this far. You're going to stay for a while here?
If we, if we have to stay, you have to stay. Sounds pretty good. If you don't have a phone, use mine. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. Thank you all for coming. Okay, first read, uh, 2B, or not 2B. Yeah, 3B. The ordinance amends title 16, chapter 16.12, definitions, use classification system, residential districts, second dwelling units in order to bring them into compliance with recent change in the state law.
Where is it?
Uh, Daniel, Dan, Mr. Dan? No, this Dan.
Oh. I'll move that we adopt the first reading. Well, no, I'm, says I'm the mover.
Oh.
Could you read?
No, it's not me.
Mine's on second.
It's on second, yeah, for me.
Mine says mover.
Okay, we'll move then.
Yeah. You on the right one? You sure?
I don't care. That's her problem. But I'll move that we adopt the ordinance with reflecting the changes that were discussed.
Okay. Waiting for Dean. Dean, did you vote?
I didn't want to get reprimanded again, so.
And you got reprimanded.
You just can't win, can you, Dean?
Did you vote, Dean?
I did.
Well, who didn't?
Okay, they're all voted now. Okay. Passes. Okay. Three C, second reading and adoption ordinance amends chapter 16.19 of the Ripon municipal code to amend the name of the new affordable housing option, BMR Plus, to a few definitions to amend the section pertaining to houses whose fair market value exceeds the upper FHA limit upon date of purchase and amend the down payment assistance section. This is the second reading and adoption.
You're up, Dean.
Somebody, somebody needs to give me something here so I can. Okay.
Mover?
Move if you want. Are you with us?
I'm here, I just-
I'll second it.
Didn't realize my phone was on.
Your phone's always on.
We're getting there, Chad.
Okay, meeting adjourned. No, just kidding.
Chad, this is on a lot of risk to get you out here.
Okay, four A. Yes, the Missland Indoor Soccer Facility Donation. City council consider approving and authorizing a major site assessment and improvement agreement with Mr. Missland and his contract. We can have staff report first, and then Chad.
Yeah, just real quick, uh, as you recall, back in the end of 2016, I think it was more like December 2016, Mr. Missland had offered to donate $2 million to construct an indoor soccer facility. You could see the, the rendering of what that facility would look like. Since that, that period of time, uh, when he offered that donation, his contractor, um, Mr. DeGraff, has completed a preliminary design and a cost estimate. The facility now would be a 50,000 square foot sports complex. It would include restrooms, a fire access, and maintenance road on the north side of the facility, and then the landscaping and signage, as you see here on the, on the rendering. At, at least in the beginning, the donation would include just the building itself. Initially, the parking lot adjacent to the fountain would be used for, um, those individuals who were utilizing this, this facility. The recommended action by, by staff is that the city council approve and authorize the site access agreement, site access and improvement agreement. This would give, um, Mr. DeGraff the ability to go out and start accessing the site and constructing the, um, the facility.
Okay. Yeah, probably so we can hear it better, if you don't mind.
What's that?
If, if you don't mind, so we can hear it better. Did you bring your samples with you?
Uh, they are in truck, in garage, I think.
We heard you were going to bring them.
We heard this was a show and tell. Bring it really to school.
So, my name's Chad DeGraff, spelled slightly different, D-E-G-R-A-F-F, not two A's.
You're the banner half, right?
Yes.
Arguable.
So yes, after, you know, going back and forth and trying to make this work, we kind of had to come back and do a little bit of redesign to make, uh, fit within certain standards and things like that. We are still doing insulated panels on the outside, which is a very nice panel, durable, uh, will hold up the soccer balls or other items going up there. Still have some of the design features, doing the landscaping. Uh, I think, actually, we have the bathrooms installed there. They will be finished out. I think it'll actually still be a very, very nice project, uh, when it's all said and done, so. I don't know, what else do you guys want to cover, or questions you guys have? Gladly answer them.
The only comment I would make is, our, our big issue that we talked about was that it looks very nice from the outside, that, you know, and, and it looks like that's what you're doing. That was really the concern. If it's a shell, it's a shell, but the outside looks nice.
There is a attempt to, again, we had to do a quick rendering type thing, but we're, we're going to attempt to even try and make it a little bit nicer, but depending on funds, we'll try and add a little bit more, uh, decorative accents and things like that to hopefully bring it out a little bit nicer.
I don't have my glasses on. Does that say Zuber Soccer Arena?
Yeah, right.
I do, do one more question. Sorry, Leo, I know you're going to ask a question, but I, how big a building did you say it was?
50,000?
27.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
This is small.
Are these, the exterior panels on this, are they similar to the panels they used to build that boat country building?
Yes. Except for, uh, we're going to propose a little bit different design. Be striated, it'll be a s, more of a smooth look with a striated, uh, thing on there. We can, we can look at different styles, but that's what I was going to propose.
I was just interested in the-
Yes. So, so it'll be a two and a, two and a half inch thick panel. It'll be, uh, steel panel on both sides with a polyurethane foam in the middle, so. Gives great R value on that portion of it and durability. Uh, two and a half is going to be R19.
And two and a half inches, huh?
It's pretty amazing how cool they will keep a building in the summertime and warm in the wintertime, too. Temperature stays nice all the time.
The front.
Yes.
Is that inset, or is that all?
Out.
We're, we're proposing to project it out approximately at 18 to two feet inch, or two feet out, to give a little bit of projection.
I, I, maybe, I, I, I don't know if that answered my question or not. The, the doors in the front, is there blockage? I, I mean, I personally have a, you see on the side, you got, uh, the right side here, there's
Windows.
Windows. Oh, but there's overhang there. Could we get like an overhang in the front, or is that inset where there's some protection from rain and weather as people entering?
We could possibly do that.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes, those overhangs are actually a lot more expensive than I thought they were.
We'll get rid of those three and put it on the front.
You don't want anything on that side?
Well, I, I mean, it looks nice, but I'm, what I'm saying is, is that, you know, when people are entering the building, they can't enter through the windows. I, I would just, it would be nice to see that, maybe we could have some kind of-
So the, those are glass roll-up doors at this point in time, and then we can open those, those are open up, so you can have airflow going through, too.
Oh, okay. So they're not just windows that-
No, they're roll-up doors.
Chad, are they on both sides?
They're on both sides.
I don't personally have a problem with anything on this. You know, I, I'd like to see this structure being built and, you know, we, you know, in case anybody here didn't know, we talked about-
Do my best.
Chad, we don't want anything like that.
Okay. So.
What do you, you need a, what? A motion to approve what?
The, uh, site access and improvement agreement.
So, well, if I could get my-
If I can get, uh, this up.
Going on with the staff over there. I already did. I moved to what he did.
All votes? Okay, there you go. Okay, thanks, Chad. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Chad.
I'm forward to it.
Hey, Chad. Glad this is gone for now. Good job. He worked with us. I mean, we got this thing done. I'm, I'm glad.
Want to go give him a kiss or something over here?
Well. Yeah, maybe he should buy pizza.
Four B, reevaluation of the Mayenberg Avenue and McRaine, McBryan Drive Residential Parking Permit Program. Continue the Mayenberg Avenue and McBryan Drive Residential Parking Permit Program without modification. Chief?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Honorable City Council. Back in August of 2016, uh, the council approved a resolution of the Mayenberg Avenue and McBryan Drive Residential Parking Permit Program. Uh, as part of that resolution, it was, the program was to be reevaluated in two years. Uh, that's why it's in front of you, uh, this evening. It's just a reevaluation of the parking permit program in this area. It covers the 400 block of Mayenberg Avenue and, uh, McBryan Drive. And, uh, I'm sorry, uh, yeah, Mayenberg Avenue, McBryan Drive. Uh, at the time, uh, we send out, um, votes for the area. There's 22 residents in this area. 18 votes returned yes, three returned no, and one was not returned at all. Uh, after the resolution passed, it was enacted in September of 2016, and the program is, is effective Memorial Day weekend through Labor Day weekend. Currently, 14 of the 22 available homes participate in the program. Where, uh, 19 permits are issued to those 14 homes. Each one of them has their five residential permits, then they have, some of them have a combination of visitor and temporary parking permits. This year, uh, we've issued 13 parking citations, uh, for violations of this ordinance, um, on Mayenberg and Reynolds Drive. 88 parking citations have been, uh, written on Reynolds Drive, just as a comparison. In the three years of the parking permit programs for Reynolds and, um, Mayenberg, McBryan, we've issued 342 parking violations in those areas.
In two years?
Uh, in the three years.
Three years, okay.
Uh, Reynolds Avenue, uh, went into effect a few months prior to, so they have a little bit more of a, um, head start on the, on the other parking permit.
What's the charge for that citation?
$50.
Do we keep that money?
Uh, we get a portion of it. It gets divvied up through other county services.
Very small portion.
Roughly, roughly 20 to 25% we, we see that money.
My question is, would be is, it, it's, that's a lot of parking tickets, or what, you know? Does it pay for our staff to maintenance that thing? I mean, is, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
It pays for the upkeep of the program, which, which is the signage, which is the parking permits, and which is, would be the care and maintenance of the, of the physical, uh, attributes to the parking permit program, and to the administrative costs. It does not pay for the time for the officers to go out there and write those citations.
I mean, yeah, I, I don't-
Yeah, but it would be a mess if we didn't have it. It was a mess before. It was.
Yeah, and, yeah, I mean, you-
It, it helps the problems that we originally set forth to try to address back in 2016. It doesn't, it hasn't eliminated them.
No.
But it has gone to address a lot of those concerns.
I've had several phone calls in the last couple of months. Summertime's a bad time over there. We all know that.
Okay, when people have, when people have guests over there, they do pay attention to whether they're going to park now when they see the sign.
Yeah, and, and over the years, we've made some adjustments. We, uh, we offer residents, especially on Reynolds, uh, that are kind of landlocked between the residential parking permit program areas. Uh, we give one day temporary passes when there's large gatherings and so forth. So we've tried to work with them. There's no cost for those additional parking permits. But, uh, it's just available to staff that's here to be able to print those out and hand them out, but, uh, we, we've tried to make some accommodations for, uh, residents in that area to try to assist them with their issues.
And I suspect the residents are happy with it. They'll give to what it was.
Yes, I, I believe that there's, uh, they, they are happy with what they've seen. Of course, they want, uh, some more things addressed down in that area, uh, so they don't have to deal with those issues of people, uh, parking in front of their homes and in their neighborhoods and traversing to the river. But, uh, we're doing our best to try to accommodate them and take care of those issues.
Oh, it was. It was wild all the way down.
It's still an issue. I, I've had calls from friends and clients that live over there, and, uh, and actually, you know, the, for example, I talked to chief about this a couple of weeks ago. One of my clients went out and would not, being threatening or just telling a person, you know, if you park there, you're, you could have a problem. Well, guess what? He told the resident that owns that house, said, wait, if I want to park here, I'll park here. And he goes, hey, I'm just warning you. Well, guess what? Two hours later, you got a parking ticket. And then, then he went over and threatened the owner of the house that-
Already called the cops?
You called the cops. And I go, no, I didn't call the cops. I warned you, and they come by, and it's still an issue, but I think it's a good thing, right?
Correct. And, uh, this is the only parking permit program area that is, uh, memorial through Labor Day. Uh, the other two areas, uh, South Manley and Reynolds are all year round.
Yeah. So do you need some direction from us to continue it? Is that what you need, or?
We're, I'm asking that the parking permit program, uh, stay as is and in place. Uh, just as a note, I did, uh, mail letters out to the residents in that area about three weeks ago. It invited them to attend tonight if they had any positive or negative comments, and I don't believe anybody's here tonight, so. My recommendation is that the parking permit program stays as is for this area.
Well, I saw Chuck Roots come in, but he left.
He was here for the RAL thing.
Know what it was? Okay, so, so do you need direction? Need a vote? Okay, we got a vote, so.
Can I ask one more qu, little silly question?
You just did.
The burn down at the, the toilets, do you think it had anything to do with that?
No.
No.
We don't know for sure, but, uh, no, we're, our detectives are still working on some, some possible leads to, uh, find the culprit on that, but, uh, I don't believe it had anything to do with the parking permit area.
And, uh, the new wiring system, when will that be installed to help protect that from happening again? I know it probably doesn't have anything to do with this issue, but I, I think it does, but-
We have an update a little bit later on during the department head reports.
Thank you.
So do we have a motion to-
I made a motion, all right.
Oh, we did, okay. We have a second.
Jeez, Mike, you're losing control here.
God, no kidding.
Hey, you up for a vote? We're going to take one.
Thanks, chief.
I'm trying to be Leo Jr.
You got a, you got approval to do that. Now we have C, grand jury responses, discuss response to grand jury, case number O117 with Superior Court, et cetera. Who's going to address that? Katie?
That one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so before you, we have prepared two separate responses to, um, grand juries, no, asking for no action today. Just your review and discussion. If you have any changes, we can bring these back for action at the September meeting. One report is based on code enforcement officers, and the second is municipality ethics policies, um, both asking for later action. Do you have questions related to them?
So we're going to revise the ethics policy to include senior staff. Isn't that what I read?
Yes. So currently, it does not, there's not been a- Yes. So currently, it does not, there's not been a requirement so far, so we're.
That really surprises me that that wouldn't have been just part of.
And in code enforcement, we're basically leaving it as-is?
Correct. We have one officer who does part-time and we can reevaluate later on.
And I like your response. I think it's an appropriate response when something's not accurate or, you know, not everything is the same for every city. And I think your response was very good. Is that it?
That's all I got.
So that will come back next month?
Yeah, for final approval.
Okay, thank you. Reports.
We aren't voting on that?
Nope.
No.
Next month. Gives you a month.
Chief.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Honorable City Council, and members of the community that have stuck it out. I have just a few things to pass along. A timeframe on the cameras, Councilman Uker, we actually received the cameras today. All, all, so we have all 76 cameras within the, within the department walls. And we anticipate those to take approximately seven weeks to install, and then there'll be a short period of time for testing. So hopefully, within two months, all the cameras will be up and running.
Wow, good.
And IT administrator Brandon has been spearheading that project for us, along with the other two. We also have upgrades to the Rip and Fire Department Tower where we have radio antennas on. We have a quote for upgrades that should be in pretty soon. And then, once we get those quotes in, we'll have a better timeline. But approximately, again, same timeframe, six to eight weeks probably, once we get those quotes in before the work is done and those are up and running. And those radio antennas actually are the ones that assist us with the cameras. So then an LPR deployment update. We have a quote, but we're looking for a refresh quote after we gave them our master plan placement. After we get the quote, we're looking at about a 45-day turnaround by the time the equipment's delivered, and then approximately a three-week installation timeframe after that. So.
For the license plate readers?
Yes. So hopefully, that's, the timeframe on that is a little bit further out than the cameras, but, you know, hoping three to four months to have those up and running and installed. The other item I have, I was asked to kind of give a rundown of kind of how we address specifics, traffic complaints within our community. And not many, many people are aware of, of the information that we gather and how we implement that information into trying to keep our roadways safe. So usually, when I give a presentation, we focus on the actual numbers, numbers of traffic citations, number of accidents, citations issued and so forth. But there's a lot more that goes into our traffic safety plan than that. So let's kind of give a, a few bullet points on, on how we go about that in, in deployment. Areas of directed enforcement are determined various ways. The number one item is the number of community complaints we get. Usually, that's either through our dispatch center or individual staff members that get complaints from members of our community. We also take in the consideration, the number of traffic collisions that occur in certain locations, change in roadway conditions, whether that's stop signs, stoplights added, roadways being widened, crosswalks being installed, whatever it may be. If there's a change in roadway conditions that actually affects our enforcement activity. Personal observations by staff, usually by the officers that are on patrol, and the number of violations occurring where enforcement stops or citations are actually being written. So we take those five things into consideration when we develop our plan for traffic enforcement. That information is, is all taken and given to our traffic sergeant. Our traffic sergeant reviews that provided data. First, to make sure it's legitimate, that there are actual issues that are occurring in those areas that are being reported. Some of those might be confirmed by visual observations, others might be with the radar trailer deployment and running speed surveys and traffic counts in certain areas. Traffic sergeant takes that information, adds it to a traffic enforcement priority list. That list is distributed on a weekly basis and updated with information to our patrol staff. And when those changes are made, the traffic enforcement priority list is redistributed to staff for enforcement activity. Something that's a little different than other communities around us, especially larger communities. All of our on-duty officers are expected to participate in traffic enforcement. Although we do have two official motor units, they only do it part-time, and they only do it certain, certain times of the month. So we actually require in need full participation from our staff to be able to keep a handle on, on traffic activity within our community. Our officers are not directed to issue citations, but to address a traffic issue that was observed in a manner to gain future compliance. This can result in citations or courtesy warnings. We leave it up to them to make the best decision on how to rectify or, or solve that issue. And we also make sure that they use this opportunity to educate the public on traffic safety issues. It is also recommended that officers focus on hazardous moving citations over other violations, with the ultimate goal of, of the Rip and Police Department Traffic Safety Program is to reduce hazardous roadway activity, which is most likely to cause traffic collisions. So that's why we do it. That's how we get the information. That's how we deploy it. I can tell you, currently, about 49 percent of the hazardous moving citations that we write are for speed and stop signs. And the rest of them are other hazardous moving violations such as illegal turning movements, failure to obey roadway signs, other things that are likely to cause traffic collisions. And the other kind of numbers I just wanted to hit on real briefly, 67 percent of the citations we, we issue are for hazardous moving violations. And the other interesting fact is, again, we let officers use their discretion on how they handle each situation. Currently, about 33 to 30 percent of the, the people that we stop are actually issued citations.
Forty-nine percent are speeding through stop signs or speeding and stop signs?
Speeding and stop signs.
Okay. Cause I, I did have a, a, a citizen complain to me the other day that, which that an officer told him, the police chief told him that he had to do this. Tickets or a certain amount of tickets, which I said, I, I don't believe that's true.
Yeah, I don't tell, I don't tell officers or staff to write citations. I do tell them to address the situation or address their problem. So I will tell, I will tell them to make stops, but I won't tell them how to handle it.
This is, this is a nice thing to have as a councilman to say, here, to give, you know, realistically, I mean, in me, in my case, I deal with, obviously, my business deals with that, and so my clients complain or bitch or whatever. And it's, I know that a lot of stuff is not true, but, and I always tell them, well, let's go down and see the chief. And it's all been taped. And you know what typically they do?
Taped?
Well, yeah, they're.
Recorded.
Oh, you mean on their, on their things?
And they go, ah, cause I always ask them, well, were you speeding or did you run the stop sign? And they go, well, of course, yeah, I did. And then what do you bitch about? But anyway, I, I think you guys do a fine job, but I, I, I'm gonna put this in my office.
And I can.
It's good information to have.
Thank you, Councilman Uker. And we can make that available, additional copies or email it to our council if they would like to have that, other than the hard print.
Thanks for the input, Dean, I appreciate that.
Wait, it's a fact of life.
I have a question too. Do you have a sense of a percentage of the tickets you give that are non-residents versus residents?
Yes. Traffic citations, it, it falls in line with just about every other thing that we do. And I equate that to arrest, whether it's felony misdemeanor or traffic violations. Traffic violations are a little bit more level compared to the physical action of an arrest, but it's right about 60/40. Forty percent being community members, 60 percent being not, non-community members.
And is there a spot where you write more traffic tickets than others?
Uh, over the last three months, it's been West Ripon Road at Jack Tone.
Hmm, surprising.
Other than that, it's, it kind of goes along with the traffic safety plan and activity sheet that's handed out to the staff. Cause that's where they spend most of their, their time when they're not responding to calls for service. They spend those time in those areas. So that's where they write the most citations. And usually, that's at Miljo, John Roos, kind of by Repone Elementary School with the turnoff there. It tends to be West Ripon Road at Jack Tone. Also, out, Miljo, near Haws, kind of by the Spring Creek area where people, people are coming in our community, speed limit there's.
Thirty-five.
Well, it depends on the time of the day, but it, when they come off Murphy, it's, it's 45 and then it goes into 30. And people still drive 50-plus through there, so.
Where are they, where are they parked when they're?
They're not gonna tell you that.
I've never seen a cop parked over there.
It may not be necessarily a patrol officer. It could be a motor officer.
Oh.
Watch out, Mike.
Uh, the, the other areas, of course, or where there's, where there's the most traffic.
Can you give me a specific intersection and what time they're there?
The, the other, the other areas are usually intersections where there's a lot of vehicle traffic, and those tend to be out at Jack Tone, Colony at Jack Tone and Santos.
Yeah, I was, I was today when I went and picked up my daughter at the high school that Officer Meese was at the corner at the four-way stop, and I had enough time to, to, you know, talk to him. And it was, well, yeah, he did that to me before. But I, I think that you guys do a great job and our police force does a great job. And, and, you know, being out there like today, first day of school, for, you know, it's a nice touch.
We will be out there all week. We had a slight scheduling issue today, but we'll have some volunteers also out there at school arrival and dismissal for the rest of the week. One other area I didn't mention is, uh, Jack Tone and Fourth Street. We'd get a lot of issues down there, not only with speed, but people under the stop sign.
Actually, you know, for the first day of school, the traffic flow through there was, it was great, you know?
Yeah, it was better than years past.
Yeah, but I did notice leaving to work this morning, though, what was going on at Rip and Hell? That whole street was blocked up. Were they having like some kind of special event there today too?
They did a special recognition to welcome new students, and that caused a little bit of a, of a backup.
I mean, because there's traffic was everywhere. But it was, yeah, it was one of those.
It's cool, Dean.
I get it. I've never noticed it before, I swear.
Did you drink a lot of coffee before you came or something? Any more questions of the chief, Dean?
Great job, chief.
Thanks, chief, appreciate it. Ted?
I bypassed the rest.
Um, just want to report on our water usage for July. That was, we were down 17.9 percent. We had a kind of a warm, warm summer, so I think that's where we're 2 percent lower than last year. Now, that brings our 12-month running average to 23.4 percent. As it relates to water conservation, this Thursday, we're going to be interviewing applicants for, to fill our vacant water conservation coordinator position. So probably in the next couple of weeks, we should, two or three weeks, should have somebody on, on staff to start working towards that.
Good. Cool. Thanks, Ted. Kai, anything to report?
Just real quick, coming off a, a busy summertime, we finished, last 10 weeks, we had 12 camps, finished up our baseball, softball, and T-ball. And this weekend, we'll be starting our soccer with about a little over 800 kids out at the sports park playing. So it'll be busy out there.
Sure will. Thanks. Ken, anything else or nothing? Nothing for James?
Yeah, real quick, I just wanted to update the council. We were asked to put together a list of, of the approved projects and where they're at, their status. So I did give each of the council members a handout of those projects, and I'll quickly run through them. So the first one on the top of your list is the River Road Intersection Project, which is the traffic signal project at Fulton Avenue and River Road. We're wrapping up construction there and just have punch list items remaining. Expect to take that to council for approval and their final invoice payment in September. The River Road Phase One Project, which is the right, road widening project between Fulton Avenue and the Cornerstone subdivision, is, is in Caltrans hands at this point. We've sent in our RFA, which is our request for authorization. So we're just waiting on our E-76 from them before we can go out to bid with that. So if we get that in a timely manner, we, we could look to expect beginning construction in December of this year and a four- to five-month project, once that's actually started. Our Stockton Avenue Rehabilitation Project, we're currently in the design and environmental phase. We also have the utility pole relocation coordination that we're handling right now. And the construction start date is, is looking like January of 2020, with a completion date of November of 2020. Our Park Review Safe Route to School Project, we have just started the construction phase of that. We're currently in this middle process with our contractor. And once we get through that, they'll actually start construction in December of this year and should be complete by March. The big delay for that is those poles that we are putting in, they have a 12 to 14-week lead time, once we approve them and they can actually order them. So that's kind of what's pushing that out and why it's taking, taking so long. The Colony and Hoff Traffic Signal Project is currently in the design and environmental phase. We submitted our PES, which is a preliminary environmental study to Caltrans, and we are waiting their comments, expecting to start in July of 2019 and complete in November of 2019. Our Doak Boulevard Bike Path Project is, is currently also in the design and environmental phase. We've just started the sequel process. So once we get through that, the design shouldn't take long, and we should be out to, in construction in March of next year and complete by July. The Lower Stanislaus River Bike Trail Project, also in the design and permitting phase, also environmental. That one's a little more complex. We've got to get special permits from Caltrans as we go under the bridge, as well as Union Pacific as we go under the bridge. We also have some coordination to do with the, the Army Corps. So we're looking to start that in February of 2020 and hopefully be complete by June of 2020. I won't go over the camera upgrades, chief already touched on that, and the license plate readers. The recycling center modifications, kind of in the construction phase at this point, the compact, the compactor is installed. It will be operational by the end of August. And then those remaining improvements out of the site, and Ted may be elaborating a little bit more, but they should be complete by October of, of this year.
That's gonna be very, very nice. That's how Ted out there the other day. And Leo helps, keeps the place cleaned up too, but the cardboard's gonna be really nice, grabbing out that stuff.
Well, we're gonna find out on Friday.
Is that when it starts, Friday then? All the cardboard goes the other side?
Leo is, is lined up training for the schools, for the schools on Friday to. Bring them up to speed on how they, how the unit's gonna operate. We're gonna be utilizing it on a generator. We're having some issues with PG&E getting power to, to the site. We've been working with them for several months, and it's kind of frustrating. So we're, we're making phone calls, trying to go up the chain to get that moving a little faster than.
Isn't it plugged in already? What do they gotta move at 100 feet?
There's a generator.
The other one's on a generator as well?
No. No. There's, there's.
Two different electric systems.
Yeah, the, 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 the power that's there at the site isn't adequate for the new larger equipment. We thought it was gonna be, the electrician was heading down that direction and then realized it wasn't enough power. So we contacted PG&E to bring us additional three-phase, larger current capacity, and that's the process that's taken quite a while.
Well, I've talked to my parents. We want an address and a name, cause we're gonna start working on them, cause this is getting ridiculous.
Well, PG&E, give them a couple of years and they might have it done.
Well, they're gonna get a few nasty notes from some really ticked-off mothers if.
Have we reached out to Dylan yet?
Yes.
Yeah?
But it's political.
They're working around it.
They actually have a political unit that when some, like when these parents start, it gets sent to San Francisco to these guys, and they decide just how politically sensitive it is and where they're gonna put it on their list. I want that job.
Yeah, no kidding.
Probably don't want that job.
I'll take the pay.
We are hoping that, that next, next week, Wednesday or Thursday, that we will be able to switch everything over to the new compactor. If everything works, works well, the training goes well, and everything, everything's.
Nice.
As projected, projected, we hope.
I'm there twice a week dumping stuff. Hopefully, they're dumping the right spot.
Don't worry, we'll let you know. Don't worry, we'll let you know.
Yeah, you're on camera.
Thanks, James. Katie, welcome. Thank you for sitting in for Tom and Stacy and...
Thank you for having me. Not too much new to report. You may know that Tom's son Tommy is actually interning in our office, so he's a law clerk with us. And I'm sure at some point, he'll come to a meeting and visit, but we have him doing a wide variety of projects. Tom said ground up, so he's filing and doing everything we need, so good to have him.
Thomas, I'd say you couldn't get him a real job, I mean, an attorney, really? Okay, fine.
They need help cleaning up the river. I mean, that's a...
Thanks, Katie.
You're welcome.
Kevin, anything?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Daniel, you lost, you lost your crowd, but go ahead anyway.
Well, that's all right. I've got three people.
And a couple of people.
Yeah. I'd say the only thing that I would announce, SSJID asked today at their board meeting that we sort of relayed the message, but on Monday, the 20th, in Sacramento, Adam Gray, someone from a little further south here, is requesting people to attend a rally to stop the state water grab, the SED supplemental environmental document for the Bay Delta Water Quality Control Plan, which is gonna take a lot of the surface water from the irrigation districts and the river systems. So they've asked to ask people if they can attend to show some support for our water districts and our, our water in this area. So if anybody's available Monday, the 20th, 12 o'clock in Sacramento, you know, all three of you, if you can attend. But as usual, thank you to the members of the public who are no longer here and the ones that are here who stuck it out. Appreciate you guys being here. Thanks.
Jake?
Nothing to report.
Dean?
I would only like to say that I would like to appreciate the hundreds of people that were here today, that I'm gonna guess it's a sign of the fortitude of our council, that me and the mayor have been running against unopposed, and I think that has to do, has something to do with what the job this council's doing.
Really?
I think. Plus, it saves the city thousands of dollars.
But when you advertise it in Vichaya, no one knew there were two openings.
Yes. Thank you.
Enjoy the entertainment.
And thank the, three people that are still here and visible. Hoo-yah.
Vice Mayor Zuber?
I just have, well, I actually have two. One, I think we need to have a discussion at the next meeting about Proposition 69. I don't know if we want to take a position or not, but we need to talk about what will happen if that thing passes. Basically, for us, our road money, all of it...
Revoking SB1?
Disappears. Because we're gonna lose, probably over the next three years, the LTF money that we get now. And if Proposition 1 is repealed, we'll lose, what, quarter of a million dollars a year that we get from that. And we'll be down to our Measure K money, which is about $230,000 a year. So I realize it's a touchy subject, but I think the community at least needs to know that there's a problem with that, as far as our ability to keep things going. So I would request that we, maybe I'll work, talk to Kevin, we can get some kind of a report ready that we can talk about, and then we can decide then whether we want to take a position or do something about it. The other thing, Chief, those lip syncs are getting closer. Saw one today from AMR in Stockton, and it's gonna, you better start thinking about that.
I told staff, as soon as there's zero crime, they can knock themselves out and do one.
I was talking to councilmen. We may have an, an agenda item next week about that, or next month, too. I'm just saying.
I stay with you, Chief. Don't worry.
Well, I don't know. I'm still on the edge there. I, I'd like to see it.
I'll see.
We're watching. That's all I'm saying.
Only if the council is involved in it.
I'm ready.
I got the camera. I have something to say. Unfortunately, we didn't have Spectrum here charter to talk to us, because I am fuming, my neighborhood's fuming, people in Ripon are fuming. Spectrum Charter is the most unreliable internet service you can get, period. And I want them to come and talk to us what they're gonna do about it, because I don't mind stuff going out. Power goes out once in a while, phones go out. But it's not like it happens once every couple of months for half an hour, hour. This last time was out for eight hours. People make money on there. It's not just checking emails and playing games. They actually get in outside servers and work. And they just cost a lot of people a whole bunch of money. So I don't know if they're gonna credit everybody, four or 5,000 bucks for what they lost, or they're gonna write checks, what they're gonna do, but I'd like them to come and address us. And I want to make that formal, because I thought they were coming tonight. People in this town are mad. And I'm not.
Our government affairs rep could not make it tonight, but I believe she's gonna try to be here on Tuesday, when we have the special meeting.
Okay.
And if she can't make...
I was just gonna say, no, tonight would have been the perfect time, because half these people are probably on charter.
And unfortunately, if she can't make that meeting, she's out of town for a period of time.
Yeah. She probably drove by and saw all the people, and her said, nah, I think I got something else going on. They need to address it.
She does have a cell phone.
What?
No, I know you are.